Let's get started. I'm sure a couple of people will wander in, but let's go ahead and jump into Matthew 18 and 19, and living together as the church, which sometimes is easier than others. Let's join in the prayer that's in the middle of the page. Does everybody have a study guide in front of them? Loving God, you call us to join together with brothers and sisters in the faith. It is often not easy to be your church. Give us strength and encouragement. Help us to be forgiving with each other, just as you have been forgiving with us. Open our minds and hearts as we listen for your word of life. In Jesus' name, amen. All right, we are reviewing where we are in Matthew. So why don't you at your table, go around, say your names, and if you don't know each other, it never hurts to say names, and then talk a little bit about where we are in the story of Matthew. Okay, take a couple of notes. So tell me some things about Matthew. Where are we? I'm sure you're all crystal clear. A hard book, we know that. Challenging book.
He left Galilee and went to the region of Judea. There's gotta be some point in that.
All right, so he's leaving Galilee. We're kind of right in the middle of that. Heading towards Judea. What's in Judea?
Jerusalem.
Jerusalem. Judea's in the south. Jerusalem's, so he's on the way. We're kind of right in the middle of that today. What else? What else is going on in this story?
Lots of teachings.
Lots of teaching. There have been lots of teaching. Lots of parables, lots of... You have heard it said in days of old, but I say to you, so he's certainly taking the teachings of old and reapplying them and going deeper with a lot of them. Yes?
I am a Messiah, but don't tell people.
"I am a Messiah, but don't tell people." All right. Yeah, and why not? Why don't they tell people at this point?
Because fulfillment hasn't happened yet.
Because the fulfillment hasn't happened. The cross is coming. Peter hasn't had right. You are the Christ, the son of the living God. Peter hasn't had right. I don't think Peter or the disciples really understand that it means a cross and suffering and death at this point. Okay? What else? What else have we got going on? Last time, we looked at a miracle that takes place in all four Gospels. Remember what miracle that is?
Feeding.
The feeding of 5,000. And we talked about how that becomes kind of the story of the church. You give them something to eat. The church is always kind of on the edge of existence and called into its existence by Jesus and then called to go and serve. You give them something to eat. So it's part of being the church, I think, caring for the world around them. We also looked at the spilling of the storm last time. And remember some of the things we talked about with the spilling of the storm? What did we say? Jesus comes and says, he identifies... They think it's a ghost, and he identifies himself as... "It is I," which is another way of saying what?
"I am."
"I am," which is another way of giving a great big hint. "I am somehow connected with this God." Maybe "I am" this God. Now, that's gotta be very hard for any Jew to believe at that point, and it would be for us too. But "I am," just like God identified himself in the Old Testament before Moses. So "I am," and then he comes, and "I am Lord, I am Savior, I am." And then, before that story is over, they're worshiping as the son of the living God. They're on their knees before him. So "I am," spilling the storm, which is quite a feat. So I think, just little by little, they are getting a better sense of who this Jesus is in front of them, and it's a big deal. A very big deal. We also had a story about a Canaanite woman, which is one of the harder stories to read, I think, in the Scripture. Jesus seems kind of like an unfeeling person. What did we decide about that story? Do you remember? What about that woman?
She recognized who he was.
She did. She recognized who he was.
Is that the first indication we have of his eventual taking the Savior for everybody? Because didn't he get originally... I may be mixing in some of the daily devotions that I've been reading the last couple of days. But apparently, he came for the Jews first.
Mm-hmm. He came for the Jews first.
If they had accepted him, what would have happened? We don't know. But I'm wondering if this is one of the first examples of his extending his salvation to non-Jews?
Well, and it's hard to even say. You know, that's very true. It's hard to even say. I think Jesus is kind of struggling and telling, "Okay, do I reach out to these people that are open to me, or do I keep reaching out to my own people? Because that was the heart of my ministry. I was sent to the lost sheep at the house of Israel." And we made the point that perhaps we can interpret this story by saying that Jesus is at the heart of his ministry when he's the Messiah of Israel. And as he fulfills that, as he fulfills all those Old Testament promises, all the hopes and dreams of people, it's only then that he can fully reach out to the whole world. So I think it becomes kind of a pivotal moment. He doesn't turn his back on Israel, but he still helps that woman. He still helps that woman. And perhaps we said it's a hint of what it's like in the Jewish Christian community to which Matthew's writing. At first, they kind of turned their back on the Gentiles, and then they kind of had begrudging acceptance of the Gentiles. And then finally, it was a full-fledged ministry and openness to the Gentiles. Not an easy move for those early Christians. So it's like that little story encapsulate a lot of what's going on in Matthew's church. All right, any other questions or thoughts before we jump on to... Let's go on to a little bit about the context. And Dwayne was alluding to this earlier. At the end of Matthew 17, Jesus was at home in Capernaum in Galilee. At the beginning of chapter 19, he will leave Galilee and begin his march towards Jerusalem before the cross. This splits Matthew 18 at a critical juncture in the Gospel. At this dramatic turn, Jesus decides to give his disciples a few lessons and how the church needs to function. You know, it sounds kind of odd, but you know, why not now? Why not at this pivotal moment, as we think about where we're going and where we've been, why not talk about the church? We've said over and over again that as Jesus faced more and more opposition from people, he started to devote more and more time to his disciples and to building up his disciples, who would eventually carry on that ministry. You know, there are certainly crowds, crowds all the way along, but more and more attention, more and more focus seemed to be on those disciples as we moved along. So the church is important. I think that's what that tells me as we transition. The church is the living embodiment of the kingdom of heaven. It's what Christ is up to and through whom Christ is up in the world. And so what the church does is important. You know, we can think that, you know, part of our church is to pay our bills and keep the place up and, you know, keep the membership rolls up, but it's so much bigger than that. It's always been so much bigger than that. It's about carrying on Christ's work in the kind of ministry that we do. And so Matthew 18 is gonna give us a little peek into the joys and challenges, I think, of being a church in any time and place. So that's the context. That's what gets us into these chapters for today. Okay? So question two. Matthew, Mark, and Luke all report that the disciples asked the question, "Who is the greatest?" Have you ever asked that question? Anybody ever heard anybody ask that question? In the Olympics? Maybe in the Olympics? Somebody comes down the slopes and they're 10 seconds behind... I mean, a tenth of a second behind, and they get silver medal, and you know, it's kind of all or nothing. Well, that's not gonna be enough for that person. They wanted to go all the way. They wanted to have gold. So we certainly can understand that striving to be great, which I think in the context of the Bible or in the context of a church, it can sound like a vague question. But notice how Matthew shapes the question in 18:1. "Who is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven?" So what do you think? Is this a good question or not? What are the disciples really asking? Why don't we read those verses out loud? Verses 18, 1, 2, 5. "At that time the disciples came to Jesus and asked, 'Who is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven?' He called a child whom he put among them and said, 'Truly I tell you, unless you change and become like children, you will never enter the kingdom of heaven. Whoever becomes humble like this child is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven. Whoever welcomes one such child in my name welcomes me.'" So what do you think? Good question or not? What are the disciples asking?
They sort of want to know how well they're doing.
Yeah, I think so.
And I think Jesus is putting them in their place and saying, "This child is more worthy than you."
Okay. Okay. Any other thoughts?
Do we sometimes want everything to be hierarchical? That there's going to be top leaders and intermediate leaders? And we want to see that kind of org... An org chart to put in your business?
We like that, don't we? We like that hierarchy. LeBron James came out by saying that the four names are the greatest players in the NBA on Mount Rushmore. He's gonna be one of those four someday. How do you say that out loud, really, with a straight face? You wouldn't if you were all loose for it, I can tell you that. Well, maybe you would. Who knows? But LeBron James said it this week, and our culture just kind of shrugs and says, "Well, maybe he will be." Maybe he will be. You know, we like to say, "Who's the greatest ever? Who's the greatest quarterback ever?" You know, Peyton Manning, is he the greatest quarterback ever? Well, he didn't win Super Bowls. He didn't win the big games at the right time. So we're not so sure about him, and on we go with our conversations, don't we? So, good question or not? Jane, you were kind of implying that maybe it's not such a good question.
No, I don't think it is the right question.
Okay. Want to back up just a little bit. Look up Matthew 5:19. So would somebody read that out loud? Matthew 5:19.
Therefore, whoever breaks one of the least of these commandments and teaches others to do the same will be called least in the kingdom of heaven; but whoever does them and teaches them will be called great in the kingdom of heaven.
Okay. So I don't know if that directly contradicts what Jane is saying.
It's not greatest.
No, it is not greatest. It's called great. So I don't think that they necessarily directly contradict, but there seems to be this implication that if you follow Jesus, if you follow his teachings, if you reach out to the least of these, and we're gonna talk about that quite a bit in this chapter, that that's a great thing to do. So I don't know. You know, I think it's kind of ambiguous. I don't know if it's bad or good.
That chapter 5, that's a tough one. That there's going to be a division in the kingdom of heaven? The greatest, and those will be the least? That's not good news.
We don't think that way, do we?
No.
Yeah. We'll talk about the little ones, because the little ones show up a lot in this chapter. And I don't... You know, we're so horizontal. And we like to think we're all kind of uneven-claimed, and we're all in the same standing before God. But Matthew tends to single out this group called the little ones. And I think he also holds up the greater ones, and those would be leaders. Leaders in the church that would be responsible to the little ones. So we might get caught up and think it's some sort of value judgment, but I'm not sure that's what Matthew's doing. I really don't think so.
Would it help to separate the motivation for asking a question versus the value of the question itself? Maybe the motivation for asking it wasn't the best. But you're always learning when you hear his answers, no matter what role they're playing.
Yeah, could be. We don't know exactly. I mean, in Mark, it's pretty clear. And it's really kind of ironic in Mark, because Jesus had just said, "Okay, I'm the son of man," but everybody knows who he's talking about. The son of man is gonna go to Jerusalem. He's gonna suffer. He's gonna die. And then, right in the next paragraph, they get into a tussle over which one of them is the greatest disciple. You know, it's meant to just be searing in its irony. Here, it's a little more ambiguous. I don't think we really know. I think it's a more neutral question here than a bad question. Who's great in the kingdom of heaven? You know, who is looking out for the little ones? Who's being an effective leader? So I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt. Then again, the disciples in Matthew always come across better than the disciples in Mark. They just do. They do. So this is a better question in Matthew, and the disciples sound more altruistic in terms of how they're trying to provide leadership. So let's go on. Jesus places a child in the center of their group. How does the child hope make Jesus point about greatness? Why don't you talk about that at your tables for a couple of minutes? Uses a child to tell them.
Trust.
Say it again?
Trust.
Trust, okay. Child, say some more about that, so you can...
Well, children don't have to have proof.
Okay. So children have a more natural kind of trust. Okay?
So if their knowledge and faith in Jesus is new, it shouldn't be destroyed by someone who has to question everything.
Okay. All right. Good. Other thoughts?
Aren't you concerned about the future?
They're not as concerned about the future. They're living in the moment. They're living in the present. Yeah, that's hard to do sometimes, isn't it? For we adults to live in the moment. Yes?
Just have a thought. Could this apply to new believers?
The... Maybe not the children part, but the next part, I think, certainly can be. I think you're right on with that when it comes to the little ones. The little ones show up throughout this chapter, and I think the little ones could be newer believers, absolutely. So other thoughts about children?
Jesus is probably telling us to take care of them.
I think so. I think so. But I'm not sure it's just about children. You get the sense that he's talking about something more here. He's using them kind of as an example, like they're trusting, they're humble. They're insignificant at times, because at the time, they certainly didn't have the status they have in today's culture. But yet, Jesus looks after them. So it becomes an example of how disciples, great disciples, great leaders... We use that term kind of in implication marks, but great leaders are people that look after the lowly and the insignificant along the way. Kathy, were you gonna say something?
I was... We were just talking, and maybe it doesn't even mean... There's not gonna be the greatest, the least, and all of that. He's saying, "If all of you can become humble and if you can become all of these things like children, you'll be accepted in heaven. There's not gonna be any categories like there are now."
Okay. That's a nice thought. Yeah.
Because it says a few... Where was that? Where was we reading? "Therefore, whoever humbles himself as his little child is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven."
Okay.
So if we become humble and all of these things, we are the greatest. When it's not saying, you know, "I'm the best of parisees" or "all of these others."
Yeah. "I'm gonna win the gold medal, and I'm gonna be mentioned on the Mount Rushmore of basketball" and all those kind of other... There's a different value system going on here than there is in our culture. There's no doubt about that. Well, let's go on to the third question, because I think it ties in with the second question. The mention of the little ones in Matthew's Gospel most likely refers to those disciples who are more vulnerable. Perhaps they are new to the faith. That's Mark's point. Or poor, or lowly, or perhaps they are Gentiles. Those who are of stronger faith have a special responsibility to look after them. I think we can kind of get hung up with the greater and lesser kind of language. But I think we do understand people that have been in the faith longer. Perhaps they have a stronger faith that we look up to. And so we're gonna look at what these passages say about the little ones. So what is Jesus teaching in 18:6 to 14 concerning the church's responsibility toward the little ones? Let's read that. 8, 6 to 14. "If any of you put a stumbling block before one of these little ones who believe in me, it would be better for you if a great millstone were fashioned around your neck than you were drowned in the depths of the sea. Woe to the world because of stumbling blocks. Occasions for stumbling are bound to come, but woe to the one by whom the stumbling block comes. If your hand or your foot causes you to stumble, cut it off and throw it away. It is better for you to enter life maimed or lame than to have two feet or two hands and to be thrown into the eternal fire. And if your eye causes you to stumble, tear it out and throw it away. It is better for you to enter life with one eye than to have two eyes and to be thrown into the hell of fire. Take care that you do not despise one of these little ones; for I tell you, in heaven their angels continually see the face of my Father in heaven." What do you think? If a shepherd has a hundred sheep, and one of them has gone astray, does he not leave the ninety-nine in the mountains and go in search of the one that went astray? And if he finds it, truly I tell you, he rejoices over it more than over the ninety-nine that never went astray. And so it is not the will of your Father in heaven that one of these little ones should be lost. Okay, so off the top of your head, what is the church's teaching about the responsibility toward the little ones? What are we saying here? What do you think?
It's very true.
Look out for each other. I mean, the kind of language Jesus uses in verses 6 and 7, what do we call that kind of language? Do we take that literally?
No.
Okay. Most all of you have your eyes and your hands and your feet. There's another word for it. What's the word? What's the word? Hyperbole. Everybody know what hyperbole is? What's hyperbole? It's exaggeration. It's kind of over-the-top exaggeration. You're not really supposed to pluck your eye out. I imagine there have been people along the way that have taken these words literally, but I don't think we're supposed to. But yeah, we're supposed to take it seriously. I think anytime Jesus uses language like this, he wants to get our attention. He wants to take this seriously. So obviously, he sets the stage early on by saying, "This is important. These little ones are important. These ones that are new believers. These ones that are on the fringes of society. These ones that are Gentiles. It's important how you treat them." And so I think this is kind of... We got an insider-outside-er thing going on here, where the insiders, the Jewish Christians that have been in the church longer, maybe they've been in the faith a lot longer, now suddenly have new folks in their church, and they're wondering, "How do we relate to them? How do we get along as a church? How do we build each other up when we're struggling sometimes, week in and week out, to know how to be faithful?" So I really think some of that's going on. So it's like Jesus is addressing this to some of those church leaders, some of those people that have been around longer. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's almost as if the game could be lost.
It could be.
The church... I mean, I don't think, you know, there's no infallibility here. They can't tell the future. So you're sort of, as you say, teetering on the edge.
Yeah.
That if you were nasty to these people, you know, the church may just sort of turn in on itself and never hurt.
Yeah. I think that's a good point. You know, I read something in the... It was online, but it was from the Huffington Post, and they were talking about trust and trust leaders in our society. And the number for clergy, the percentage for clergy of trust is trending downward, which isn't hard to imagine. You know, we end up in the news more often than we care to admit sometimes. And the abuse of children with priests has not been a good thing. There are certainly other examples too with Protestants. I don't want to just pick on the Catholics at this point. But we're trending downward. We're ahead of Congress. That's good news. But that's not very good news at all. You know who was top in that list? You wanna guess who was tops in the list? What do you think?
Tops in good news or bad news?
Tops in terms of good. Most trusting. No, not police.
Nurses?
Nurses were high. Nurses were very high. Teachers. Elementary school teachers were very high. I remember all the names of my elementary school teachers. They were all good, except for one. They didn't ask me the question. Teachers were very high. Pastors, we've gone down. And I hate to say it, we have. We've lost trust of people. And so that pained me. You know, Congress is down around, what, 10%? So it's not particularly good. Then again, we tend to vote the same people back in office. So that's part of the dichotomy sometimes. We like the ones that have looked out for us. But yeah, in general, we don't like others. Yeah. So trust is an issue here. And there's a lot of pressure put on leaders to look out for the little people. Okay? We don't want to be causing people to stumble along the way. What do you suppose that means? What would it mean to cause someone to stumble? A sin of some kind, or... What else? What else would it mean?
Fall away.
Fall away? Leave. Leave. Lose confidence in the church, in the community. People can get disillusioned with the church in a hurry sometimes because of the way we act, the way the leaders act, the way we act towards one another. When I was growing up, of course, and we didn't have any drinking in our community, When I was growing up, of course, and we didn't have any drinking in our community, drinking was a big cause of stumbling. You can't be out holding a beer in your hand because you might lead somebody down that path. So I really don't know if that's what Jesus was getting at, but it was very conveniently used when I was growing up. So no alcohol of any kind whatsoever. Notice what it says in verse 10 and 11, or verse 10. "Take care that you do not despise one of these little ones, for I tell you, in heaven their angels continually see the face of my Father in heaven." What does that sound like?
Guardian angel.
It sounds like a guardian angel. I don't know if we have any big fans of guardian angels here, but they're certainly popular in our culture. Yeah. Tell me about guardian angels. What do you think?
I believe in them.
You believe in them?
Yes.
I've had too many close calls.
Too many close calls. So it seems like somebody's been looking out for you, Emily.
When you need them, they're right there.
They're right there for you. Pat, you needed some along the way. You too, Donna.
She was there.
It felt like people, somebody was there looking out for you.
I'll tell you.
What's an angel, by the way? What's an angel? Yeah, somebody up there, one of the angelic beings, the heavenly kind of being, mysterious being. The word literally means messenger, somebody that is a messenger, somebody that comes and brings a message from God. You see that in Luke 2, when the angels come, "Glory to God in the highest, and an earth peace among those whom God favors." So it's certainly a messenger of God. So this could be another way of saying guardian angel, or just perhaps the fact that God is close to you. God is near you. God is paying attention to you, that somehow God's face is turned towards you. And Jesus, in a very specific way, is saying that God cares deeply about fragile little ones, whether they be children, or new believers, or gentiles, and God is constantly watching over them, which is a nice thing to say, isn't it? It's a nice thought to have. And Pat and Donna, when you were in your car accident, I don't know how many times you felt that along the way, but.
A few.
Yeah. A powerful fact.
Very powerful.
Yeah. It's a little bit like when people say, "I felt the prayers of the people that were lifted up for me along the way." You felt that too, I'm sure. Yeah. Certainly, a lot of people, I felt, I think around here, they felt like you were a long ways away, and they wanted to be able to be closer to you. And they certainly were in spirit.
And they did come closer.
Did they?
Oh, yes.
And then you came back here? And I think you put on another half-power to the last part.
Oh, I'm having trouble with that.
It's bizarre, isn't it?
But, you know, I didn't cry a whole lot when I was in the hospital, and I don't know why, but when I started reading the cards from home, then the tears came.
Yeah. Very profound, isn't it?
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely. And Donna, you got out first.
Yeah, I did. And I spent two days, the first two days, in the emergency room because they didn't have any rooms up in the hospital. And the third day I was there, the pastor from church walked in, and as she walked in, a voice said to me, "You're gonna be all right."
Oh, wow. Like an angel with a message from God. An angel with a message from God. That's nice. I bet that was tremendously helpful at that time.
Right.
Because you didn't know anything.
No.
Yeah. Nice. Well, thank you for sharing that. We didn't set this up ahead of time, so thanks for letting us put you on the spot. It's very moving. It's very moving. And yeah, I think you're right, Emily. God shows up in lots of ways for us. Yeah, you know, no matter, no matter how careful though I think leaders are, no matter how careful they're tried and true are, little ones are still gonna stumble though, aren't they? There's gonna be times where it's sin, or they wander away, or they get lost, they get disillusioned, they get discouraged. And then you get this little picture in verse 12. What do you think? "If a shepherd has a hundred sheep and one of them has gone astray, does he not leave the ninety-nine on the mountains and go in search of the one that went astray? And if he finds it, truly I say to you, he rejoices over it more than over the ninety-nine that never went astray. So it is not the will of your Father in heaven that one of these little ones should be lost." Now, very quickly, I want you to keep your hand there, but turn to Luke, chapter 15. We're gonna kind of compare. Luke uses the same story, but it's slightly different in Luke. Luke 15. "Now all the tax collectors and sinners were coming near to listen to Jesus, and the Pharisees and the scribes were grumbling and saying, 'This fellow welcomes sinners and eats with them.' So he told them this parable: 'Which one of you, having a hundred sheep and losing one of them, does not leave the ninety-nine in the wilderness and go after the one that is lost until he finds it? And when he has found it, he lays it on his shoulders and rejoices; and when he comes home, he calls together his friends and neighbors, saying to them, "Rejoice with me, for I have found my sheep that was lost.'" Just so, just so I tell you, there will be more joy in heaven over one sinner who repents than over ninety-nine righteous persons who need no repentance." So same story, different context, right? So just tell me in your mind, how is Luke using this story? What's Luke using it? What's he talking about here? Who's the shepherd in Luke?
Jesus.
And how do you know that? How do you know Jesus is the shepherd?
Because they've been criticizing him for eating with sinners.
He's been eating with all the wrong people. He's out there eating with all those lost sheep, isn't he? And so what does he do? He goes and searches for them. And notice the language. Look at the language in the second half of verse 5, or at the beginning of verse 5. "When he has found it, he lays it on his shoulders and rejoices." What does that say about Jesus?
Takes their burden.
He takes their burden.
Carries them.
He carries them.
Continues searching.
He continues searching. And each one of these stories, it's like the woman that has the ten coins and loses one of them and finds it, like the father that goes, it keeps looking out for his son to come home. But I like the language, "when he has found it." Let's go back to, he's got a good track record, in other words. Go back to Matthew 18 now. And look at verse 12. Would somebody read that out loud? Verse 12.
What do you think? "If a shepherd has a hundred sheep and one of them has gone astray, does he not leave the ninety-nine on the mountains and go in search of the one that went astray?"
And keep reading.
"And if he finds it, truly I tell you, he rejoices over it more than over the ninety-nine that never went astray."
Okay, so we're looking out for the church here. We're talking about the little ones. Who's the shepherds? Who's the shepherd here?
The leaders in the church.
The leaders in the church. And what kind of language does he use?
Well, it makes it questionable whether they will.
Yeah. Not when, but if. It's a small thing, but it's a huge thing. It's just one little word, but obviously, the church leaders don't have the same track record that Jesus does. We'd like to think we have an influence, all of us, but we know that there are limits to what we can do as we try to reach out to people, as we try to make a difference, call them back, help them in their lives. Sometimes people just go their own way. Luke is maybe more optimistic than Matthew, I don't know. But obviously, Jesus has a more impactful ministry than these church leaders do in Matthew. And that's the truth. Yes, Parch?
Well, I have above 10 there, my, I have a little inscription. "Jesus warns against looking down on others."
Okay. For this section here, "Jesus warns against looking down at others."
On others.
On others, yeah. Well, I think this is all about the value of any one sheep, any one person. We certainly don't want to look, they're valuable. They're valuable in his eyes. And now he's equipping the church, as he gets ready to go to Jerusalem, he's equipping the church to look out for the little ones. Everybody, everybody. And if you want to call yourself great, if you want to use that language, you better be looking out for the little ones, because that's where greatness is found. And to me, then that comment makes sense in that context, not in talking about Rushmore or the NBA, or other things. Okay? So far, so good? Let's go on to question five, because it isn't gonna get any easier, this chapter. Matthew 18, verses 15 through 20. Let's read these out loud. People are gonna stumble. People are gonna make mistakes. People in the church aren't gonna always get along. "If another member of the church sins against you, go and point out the fault when the two of you are alone. If the member listens to you, you have regained the one; but if you were not listened to, take one or two others along with you, so that every word may be confirmed by the evidence of two or three witnesses. If the member refuses to listen to them, tell it to the church; and if the offender refuses to listen even to the church, let such a one be to you as a Gentile and a tax collector. Truly I tell you, whatever you bound on earth will be bound in heaven, and whatever you loose on earth will be loosed in heaven. Again, truly I tell you, if two of you agree on earth about anything you ask, it will be done for you by my Father in heaven. For where two or three are gathered in my name, I am there among them." So what advice does Jesus give for restoring broken relationships? And can you imagine this instruction being effective in today's church? Take two minutes to talk about that at your table, and the only answer is not no, okay? Tell me some things about this passage. What about this is interesting, intriguing, perhaps helpful for today? Some churches follow this letter of the law. But I have never known this. I've done things that are like some of these things. So tell me, what's helpful? Marge?
When they follow the letter of the law, as you explained, what can you expand on that?
Churches?
Yeah.
Oh, they'll bring up a person before the congregation in sort of a, in sort of an attempt to hold that person accountable before the congregation.
That compared to?
Well, it could be. I'd be hard-pressed to come up with an example. I've just heard about things, and so I haven't written, committed them to memory. But suppose somebody has done something that's affected somebody else in the church. Okay, we're all gonna get together and we're gonna name names. Name names. I think that kind of stuff works better in a small church. I don't think it necessarily works very well at all in a bigger church. And I think this might be a hint that we're talking about a small-house church, and everybody knows everybody anyway, and they know the issues already. If you read Philippians 2, I think it's chapter 2, where Eudia and Syntike are not getting along. They're two women, they're not getting along. They've both been leaders of the church, and Paul names their names in his letter, and he urges them to get along. And so I think in a smaller church, sometimes where everybody knows the issues, it's easier to do that than in a large church setting. I don't know if that gets to your question, Marge, but that's.
Yeah, I was thinking that, you know, in the end of verse 17, the thing that comes home to me is that even if you look at them as a Gentile or a tax collector, those are the ones that Jesus befriended, so we cannot let them go.
That's exactly right. I, you know, I think that's the point of this. It's so easy to see this as evening a score or righting a wrong, and this is all about restoration. It's all about bringing people back into the fold. I mean, Jesus had time for Gentiles and tax collectors. What else is new? So absolutely right. That's a very good point. What else stands out from this passage? I heard a statistic the other day, Roy Oslon, who's a church consultant. You want to guess what percentage of the population is more open to confrontation or reaching out to another person in difficult situations? What percentage of the population is comfortable doing that? Want to guess?
Twenty-five.
Fifteen. Fifteen. That means eighty-five percent of us are chicken. It's hard. It's really hard to reach out to someone, isn't it?
Is that fifteen percent more from the 2018 to the 30-year-old?
I don't know. I just.
They didn't get into that part.
I, no. I just heard that statistic, and they didn't break it down. But I believe it. I believe it. I've had to work very hard as pastor to not be part of that eighty-five, because my job really doesn't allow me to do that. I could try to do it, but I don't think, I'm supposed to be like the earlier chapter, or earlier the chapter where I'm searching out the lost sheep, where I'm going to people and talking to them. Yeah. So what do we do about something like this? Whether you're part of the fifteen or part of the eighty-five, what do we do about a chapter like this or a section like this? What do we do? What's helpful? Do we do anything?
I'm not sure I understand the expression "bind on earth," first of all.
Bind on earth? That's part, we talked about this last time a little bit too. That has to do with the office of the keys. What the church does is serious business. And now, it's easy to take that in kind of a legalistic way, and if I decide that Jane doesn't deserve forgiveness, then she's not getting it. Don't worry about Jane, I'll.
I mean, appeal. It's very legalistic, actually.
It certainly can sound, it can sound legalistic, but I really think the point of this whole passage gets back to what Marge was saying, and that's, it's about restoration. But I think it's saying, it's very important for the church to reach out and to take its work seriously, because it's all about bringing back those lost sheep into fold. It's all about reaching back. It's all about repairing relationships. It's all about trying to do what you can. So I want to read it in that kind of context. I wanted to read it in a grace-filled, restorative kind of context, and not a, "We're gonna withhold because we can," kind of context. What else is positive about this passage?
I see the word reconciliation.
Absolutely. It's certainly a picture of reconciliation. Yep. Yep. What else?
We said, "Don't be able to custody genocidal with two or three or four others."
Which we oftentimes take, I mean, it is a very positive word, but in this context, it's spoken in the context of the church and its authority, right? It's not necessarily about prayer meeting so much as the church and its authority. What the church decides to do in reaching out to restore is very important. It's an expression of Christ's love and forgiveness itself. And what else? I love the advice, when a person has, how does it go? If another member of the church sins against you, what's the next word?
Go.
Go. Is "go" ever easy? Even if you're one of the fifteen percent, it's not easy to go, is it? There's a lot of verses in the Bible that we hold up as being especially worthy of our attention. I don't know if many words are much more important than that one. Go. In your family, go. In your neighborhood, go. In your church, go. At your place of work, go. I don't know if there's many commands of Jesus that are neglected more than that one. Go.
Which verse do you say?
15. Verse 15. "If another member of the church sins against you, go."
Privately.
What is it? What's that?
Privately.
Go privately. Yeah, I like that sense, because for most of it, it's a lot easier to do it one-on-one, isn't it? And I think most people that we have offended, they're gonna rather do this one-on-one than suddenly bring it up in front of the church on a Sunday morning during the announcements.
Or even tell a neighbor and say, "Well, you know, so-and-so did this." I mean, it could have slipped the air. I think to confront, if something is in your heart and something's not right, Janet and I, of course, we make jokes, but we apologize for everything, because we sort of like that. But I think that's important to do. And if you're the person who's done the wrong, go and tell the person that you're wrong. Gee, I didn't mean that.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, Jesus, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about this on Sunday, because it comes from Matthew 6, but if somebody has something against you, you're supposed to go then too. You're supposed to go. Jesus puts the onus on us in the church to just go, to just go. Don't wait around for them to come to you. You go. Now, you might not be able to undo all the wrongs of this world. There's human limits to this, if that sheep's gonna come back, if that relationship's gonna be restored, but we're still supposed to go, and privately. You're exactly right, Marge. I'm much more comfortable, like if I have an issue with a staff person, I suppose I could bring it up in front of the whole staff, but I think they'd probably rather that I do a one-on-one in the office, right? Most of us are just much more comfortable with a one-on-one. And, you know, it doesn't say anything about, okay, complain to six of your best friends about this other person first. We like third-party conversations. It's easier, right? It's easier. Gossip. Gossip is another word for it. It's easier to talk to somebody else and vent, but I'm not sure it ever does much good other than make us feel better about ourselves, or we're more justified in our feelings. But it's pretty clear, if you have something, go. Go. So that's just a little tune-up for my sermon on Sunday, so I can tell you, I'm gonna stay open up. But it's important. It really is important. And the ultimate goal is restoration. Okay, let's press on. Verses, question number six. What does Jesus point in 18:21 and 22? You know, it's like, okay, Jesus, you put all this stuff in front of us. I sin against my neighbor, my neighbor sins against me. So then Peter, good old Peter, who likes to bring things out in the open, so Peter came and said to him, "Lord, if another member of the church sins against me, how often should I forgive him?" Let's get this out of the table. There's many, seven times. Can't you just see somebody asking this question? Can't you just see it? And Jesus said to him, what?
Seventy-seven.
Not seven times, but I tell you, seventy-seven times. The Greek is uncertain. It could be seventy times seven, too. Some of your translations might say that. What does Jesus mean? Never stop. Don't count. Never stop. I think this is almost, at first blush, humanly impossible, because most of us are gonna have run out of tolerance after about three times. Aren't we? Seventy times seven, Jesus, you've got to be kidding.
So how do you put this one back to verse 15 before?
How do we guide in? Another member of the church sins against you?
Do you ever get to go and confront the fault if you're continuing to forgive?
Well, who says confrontation isn't parcel with forgiveness? I think they go hand-in-hand. You don't go there to just confront the fault, right?
But it says you go and tell them the fault.
Yeah. Yeah. But to me, when I think about that, of course, I've been on the receiving end of people pointing on my faults or issues with me. But hopefully, eventually, we get the air cleared and we share. We're not necessarily very good. We can apologize, but I don't know if we're really good at the forgiveness part of it, that next step, but I don't know if that's what you're getting at or not.
It seems there's a conflict that I have trouble with here.
What would be the point of going in the first place?
I have problems with fifteen.
Yeah. And that's what I'm asking. So why did Jesus send them there in the first place?
Well, to bring about reconciliation, but it seems to me that you don't do that by going and confronting them with their fault.
Well, it kind of depends on how you bring something out. So Jane? Remember when we had that meeting last week? And you said that my sermons were hitting home and all to you and I felt like I was mailing them in or getting them off the internet or something. You know, that... Well, let me just say that honestly. That hurt my feelings. Could we talk about that?
Sure.
All right. Did you mean it?
Maybe I was being a little hyperbolic.
What does that mean?
Maybe I was exaggerating.
Would you totally have cut my arm off because I was writing bad service? Did you mean it? Obviously, we're having some fun here. But you can imagine any issue. You hurt my feelings.
Gee, that wasn't my intention. My intention was to have a dialogue about some of the repetition you've been putting into your sermon. I've never said it, so I...
Yes, I...
And you never will now.
Maybe you bring up a good point. It's hard for me to admit that, but maybe you bring up a good point.
Well, but you're a very good preacher. You know that. So I'm finding out that there may be a formula here. I'm making this up.
Well, I'm sorry that I reacted like I did.
Well, I probably should have chosen different words.
Could we still be friends about this?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Good, good. Now, again, you can imagine any issue and what you need to talk about with confrontation. And it's always tricky because when you get to the end, you know, after you say you're sorry, do you say, "I forgive you"? You know, sometimes you can use that as a quote, "Carol, I forgive you", and you need it. That's what it can sound like. And we don't want it to sound like that. And so that's the trickiest part. You know, it's another thing to say, "Carol, can you forgive me?"
And what do you do with the memory of the incident too?
I don't think... You know, in a perfect world, it would just kind of drift away. But let's be honest, if that hurts deep enough, we're gonna have it till the day we die. We just don't.
But when you talk to someone, there's a silence if something is awkward and it's staying with you. And you actually prick the balloon if you go and talk to someone and you start the healing process. If you don't say anything, if I say to Janet, you know, I was just telling you about this, you know... And then I think it festers.
It does. I agree.
And you have to get it out in the open. And even just the saying of it helps. Just the saying of it. And maybe you can't totally resolve it. I mean, we have, you know, people who were deeply opposed to the welcoming statement on Sunday.
Sure.
And at our table, we talked about that in terms of this. At some point, there's gonna be a divide.
And you want to be able to talk to people anyway.
I think in any conversation, confrontation is important. People focus on how you feel.
Absolutely.
So if Tom is offended, maybe I can go to him and say, "When you say that to me, I feel very offended or I am hurt or something." Or that isn't saying, "You are really a bad person."
Yeah. High language versus low language, so very important. It's so much less confrontational to say, "I was hurt by that. That bothered me", rather than, "You're such a jerk for saying stuff like that." Dwayne, are we getting anywhere close to what you're talking about?
But the point being that I think fifteen is dealing with something much more serious than a sensitivity to a point in a sermon. Because if Jane were to press and said, "No, I really don't like the preaching", and you know, then you have been pressed to get some of the counsel to go and talk to Jane. I mean, the issue has to be much more profound than we're dealing with in fifteen.
Yeah.
And we have to... Because sometimes it's just people's sensitivity that they're...
Absolutely.
It's a serious issue they're dealing with in fifteen.
Oh, yeah. Well, we said here it would be something, you know...
Something serious, absolutely.
Embarrassment or something. I mean, you have to deal with that.
But I don't know how serious it has to be. What if somebody's cow got out and ruined somebody's crop? I mean, we could decide from our perspective, well, that doesn't sound like a big deal at all. But if you lost your whole crop for the year, that's a big deal. Especially if you weren't keeping up your fence or, you know, you had been lax in the past and the neighbor had talked to you. So pick an issue. If it's your issue, it's a big deal usually. So I don't know if you go to the second part and the third part of today's world. I think the best we can hope for is probably go to that person one-on-one. Unless it's maybe a situation, you know, you've seen sometimes where there's been addiction issues and there's been intervention kind of possibilities. I've been involved in interventions where you sit with three or four or five people around the room and say, "This drinking is affecting everybody. It's affecting all of us and this is what it's doing to me. This is the harm that it's causing me in my heart." So I can imagine a lot of situations. I could. And there's never a one particular formula that's gonna work to get you from point A to point D. There's probably gonna have to be a variety of ways to go down that path. But sensitivity is certainly a part of it and openness, I think, is a part of it. And forgiveness. Let's look at the parable that Jesus tells in 23 through 35. "For this reason the kingdom of heaven may be compared to with King who wished to settle accounts with his slaves; but he began to reckoning. One who owed him a thousand talents was brought to him; and as he could not pay, his Lord ordered him to be sold, together with wife and children and all his possessions, and payment to be made. So the slave fell on his knees before him, saying, 'Have patience with me and I will pay you everything.' And out of pity for him, the Lord of the slave released him and forgave him the debt. But that same slave, as he went out, came upon one of his fellow slaves who owed him a hundred dinari; and seizing him by the throat, he said, 'Pay what you owe.' And then his fellow slave fell down and pleaded with him, 'Have patience with me and I will pay you', but he refused. And then he went and threw him into prison, until he would pay the debt. When his fellow slaves saw what had happened, they were greatly distressed and they went and reported to their lord all that had taken place. And then his lord summoned him and said to him, 'You wicked slave, I forgave you all that debt because you pleaded with me. Should you not have had mercy on your fellow slave, as I had mercy on you? And in anger, his lord handed him over to be tortured, until he would pay his entire debt. And so my heavenly Father will do also to every one of you, if you do not forgive your brother or sister from your hearts.'" Okay, so how is Jesus further developing the point that he just made with Peter? The seventy times seven or seventy-seven times point?
Well, we want to be treated well, but we're not always willing to treat others as well as we would like to be treated.
Yeah. I mean, how much does the first guy owe?
More.
About a bazillion dollars. About a bazillion dollars. Pick a number and then take it times about a million and then you've got that number. I mean, it's way more money. Jesus has almost made up an amusing number like a bazillion to say it's far more than anybody could count. So obviously, we're beyond the realm of a literal story here and just saying, "Sometimes you owe everything, right? Sometimes you owe everything." And the next guy, how much does he owe? A hundred dinari, which is no small amount, but it's much, 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 much less. It's a half a million times less than a bazillion dollars. Okay, so you're following me? It's a trifling by comparison. And when the other slaves kind of report rat on this guy, how do we feel? Yeah. The guy kind of deserves it, right? He eventually gets his comeuppance. He gets tossed into jail. We feel kind of good about that. But is it good?
Or would he torture?
Yeah. What's happening towards the end of this parable? We're kind of saying, "Well, good, he deserves it. He deserves it. He wasn't very forgiving." And then so Jesus does what to us?
Saying we get our comeuppance too.
We're gonna be in that same boat, aren't we? Because who did we owe bazillion dollars to? God. And who owed a hundred dinari to us? Jay owes it to me. No, no, I owe it to Jay or whatever. We owe it to the person in our life, right? It's a trifling amount. You might as well just say, "It's a trifling amount compared to the bazillion dollars you owe to God." So before you say "good" too quickly, think for a minute about what you owe God. And if God has been so good and amazing and free in sharing God's forgiveness with you, regardless of what you owe or what you might merit, then perhaps, not perhaps, definitely, you need to share that forgiveness with a brother or sister and thing. Isn't that what's going on here? It's a hard parable because I know a lot of people in every church, and sometimes I'm one of them, that struggles to forgive and let go of something. It's hard, really hard. Which makes me think, okay, forgiveness has been an issue in the church ever since the very beginning. Ever since the beginning. Really, really hard. And not just in the church. In families and in every other situation too. It's hard. Hard to forgive. Okay? Anything more on that? Let's go on to Matthew 7 and then we'll skip on to Matthew 9. Or I mean Matthew... Question number seven, excuse me, Matthew, Matthew 18. Matthew 18 contains Jesus' second teaching about divorce in this gospel. In 5:31 and 32, that's the Sermon on the Mount, Jesus has taught them that divorce is contrary to God's intention. And now as Jesus begins the journey to Jerusalem, the Pharisees have a test for him. They ask, "Is it not lawful for a man to divorce his wife for any cause?" The real issue in this exchange is not divorce per se. That has been addressed in chapter 5. But whether there is any negotiating room in the will of God, the Pharisees are probing to see if they can find cracks in Jesus' resolve. They could have picked any one of the key kingdom issues, anger, adultery, peacemaking, loving one's enemy. They chose divorce, which then becomes a test case. So what does Jesus say? We won't take the time to read it, but what does Jesus say about the subject of divorce in this section? Remember?
I see he's talking about accept... You can accept it. You accept it.
Yeah, look at verse eight. He said to them, "It was because you were so hard-hearted that Moses allowed you to divorce your wives; but from the beginning it was not so. And I say to you, whoever divorces his wife except for unchastity and marries another commits adultery." So what's Jesus saying there?
Don't throw away your relationship over something small.
Okay. So don't throw away it over something small.
That's how it was in the Old Testament, right? You could give a divorce...
You could. It was much easier in the Old Testament. That's what they're talking about when they say Moses. Moses allowed you to write a certificate of divorce. Remember, we talked about this last time? We talked about how divorce at the time was roughly akin to abandonment. It was like, and it was the man in Jewish law that was allowed to divorce. Much like in some Muslim countries today, only the man is allowed to divorce the wife. Women don't always have that prerogative, but they certainly didn't in the Old Testament times. And so a man, one of the schools of thought, a man could quite easily just say, "I'm not pleased with you anymore. You're looking a little past your prime. Your cooking isn't the best these days."
Nope, he could have done it.
Now, it sounds facetious, but that is the truth. There are stories that get shared about some guy got his dinner burned one night, divorced his wife. And so Jesus is really pulling back the reins on that and said, "People, God never intended it to be that easy. Ever intended it to be that easy." Now, it's easy to take a passage like this and turn it into a new law that you hold over people's head like a clock. And that's the struggle. Anybody that's been in a church or has friends that have been through a divorce, you know it's some of the most painful experiences that a person could go through. So I don't want to make it sound like people all went off to Vegas and decided on a woman to get married and now they're gonna throw it away like there's some Hollywood star or something. I don't think that's Jesus' point at all. I think his point is, in this chapter where you're looking out for the little ones, Jesus is also looking out for women and saying, "Men, you can't just abandon your wives and go find a prettier one and say, 'Now I'm married again.'" Now, the certificate of divorce, we said, it at least allowed the woman to think about remarried someday so that she wouldn't be destitute and potentially starve to death because that was the risk. She would have no way to support herself. So this is looking out for the women to some extent. But in a larger case also, it's to see if there is a crack in Jesus' resolve. Whatever issue that the Pharisees would have picked on, would they begin to say that maybe, "Well, maybe God has been awaked at a little abandonment. Maybe God could turn a blind eye to a small percentage of spouses being abused or a few children being molested or so long as there weren't large numbers." You know, it's really about that larger issue. Jesus is now on the way to the cross and how strong is His resolve? How clear is His vision of God's purpose for His life going to be? I really think in the larger context, this just becomes yet another test case for Jesus' strength and resolve in being faithful to God. Should we, are we meant to honor our marriages as much as humanly possible? Absolutely. Of course we are. Matthew provides an exception that you can leave a marriage on the ground of adultery or unchastity. We're not exactly sure what that is, but probably adultery. Mark doesn't allow for any exceptions whatsoever. You just can't get divorced and remarried. But he also allows women to get divorced. So Mark's in a different context. And that was Roman law, that women could also participate in filing for divorce. So are we supposed to follow this literally or not? What do you think? Are we supposed to follow this to the letter of the law? No, divorced people can't be remarried? It's hard, isn't it? Churches do that sometimes. Not very many though.
Well, it's interesting because a lot of women are plunging to poverty even today by divorce. So if that's one of the motivating factors, I think you have to say, you need to provide for this other person. And of course, in modern divorce laws, we have no fault because we can't get into all these things, but, you know, people have defenses they can use. Sorry, I guess I'm speaking about legal divorce rather than in the church. But of course, the Catholic Church still does it. It was literally for a long time and you had to try to get it in an omen and it was all about the game of saying, "Well, there was something at the beginning that you didn't need to understand about each other." The classic case is that someone is a drug user and that person doesn't know it and that was grounds for an omen. You can get a legal omen too. But I think it's all about caring about the other person and not doing something that is irreparable in your relationship with that person.
I mean, I think most of us would think twice... Again, keep in mind, Jesus is on his way to Jerusalem. He's trying to say, "There is no crack in my resolve. I hold you up to God's highest standards." And Jesus does that throughout Matthew. Really hard stop as he holds us up to God's highest standards. But at the same time, we know that we are pilgrims on the way and that we are like those little ones, subject to stumble and fall sometimes. And sometimes marriages are anything but what God's intention would be. And sometimes there are addiction issues involved, there are abuse issues, and sometimes people are hopelessly infatible and do nothing but fight. And the children see that day after day after day. And I would have a hard time counseling somebody to say, "No, you have to stay in the marriage, period, because that's God's intention for you." We can all find examples and we all have had friends and maybe some of us in this room have gone through that ourselves. So my heart goes out to those people because those situations are real and they're present in every church. I think the harder issue, and I'm sure you remember some of this, the way the church has struggled with divorce and remarriage for a long time. And I would like to think that forgiveness and second chances can apply to people that have gone through a divorce and lived through the pain of that and are looking for a new chance in their life without calling it adultery. Okay, so I'm gonna go beyond what Jesus has said here and say, "I... People are living a long time, a lot longer than they did in Bible times, and I'd like to think that..." And I'd like to think that when it's the right situation and the right time, then you'd like to think that people could be forgiven and have a new chance, a new opportunity, and be able to get remarried along the way.
But actually, as a member of the congregation, it's really not for us to have to... I mean, why should we stop associating or being friendly to people or whatever just because they happen to be divorced, you know?
Yeah. Exactly. But we've been in places, and I shared the story before. When I was growing up, there was provision in the church bylaws to not have people get remarried in the church. They got remarried in the parsonage when I was growing up. And so I saw that, and I witnessed it, and it was painful to watch that.
Early in Zambro's history, that was part of the tradition of this church.
Yeah. Do you remember what it's like?
No, I think, but in the thirties, forties, I don't think they would... The pastor at this time would remarry anybody in the church that had been divorced.
You know, the pendulum, I'll be honest, can swing too far in the other direction. We know that. But I know very few people that have gone into a marriage casually and then just kind of thrown it away. Again, I don't read People Magazine. So I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about people that I've been involved with, and I know their hearts, and I know how hard they struggle with this issue. And at that point, I go beyond. I think God continues to speak and continues to give us a word of forgiveness and mercy and grace and a second chance for people. And I'll just say that. Then we go, as Lutherans, beyond how some churches would read the Bible. And maybe that's not a big shock to you, but I think it's important to say it out loud because we read it differently than other Christians, and that means we end up in different places than other Christians sometimes. All right. These are hard things. We're not gonna have time to get into the man who's rich. What's that?
Skipping over eunuchs.
Yeah, the eunuch. Yeah, we're not talking about the eunuchs. I didn't even get into the eunuchs, so I didn't want to go there. And we didn't get into money. But obviously, Jesus has some things to say to a rich man who obviously couldn't find it in his heart to part with the one true thing that he valued in his life, to follow Jesus, could he? This discipleship business is hard. It's complicated. It's demanding. It's exciting. But I think anybody that says it's easy or clear all the time is probably not trying very hard. It's hard work. I've been convicted by Matthew and continue to be. As I said before, I never really taught it before. I preached on it, but something about teaching your way through it to say, "Yeah, this is a lot harder than I thought." Hard stuff. So I appreciate you sticking with it all the way to the end. Any final kind of thoughts or questions? We have, I think they even had them there ahead of time. The study guys have answers if you'd like to read further, especially about some of the questions we didn't discuss. But thank you. Thank you for your comments today. Jane and I are gonna talk afterwards.[1794.25]